Welcome, everybody, to the Zona Board Meeting, October 26, 2021. My name is Marty Akins, I'm the chairman. We have Ms. Cavares, the vice chair, is here. Mr. Hamel, board member, Mr. Chin, board member. And I think that's it. So, we'll go through a few things first, we'll see if we can't get a fifth player, and then we're gonna have to go through and ask everyone if they want to be heard with only four players on the board tonight. Uh, there's only four members, you have to have all four to get a variance, three to get a finding. I have a couple letters here, Mr. Cavares. First of all, if we could waive the reading of October 12th, Mr. uh-
Yes, we could do that. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from October 12th.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
I agree.
Opposed, so move. I have, uh, 49 Shea Street. You want to move this to January, because there's no plans, anyone talk to them, January 11th?
We have January 11th.
All right, January 11th, 49 Shea Street, I have a letter here, Mr. Bass.
Mr. Chairman, matter number 21-71, Attorney Patrick Foley, for a variance to demolish the existing single-family home and build a new two-family townhouse-style home on the premises number 49 Shea Street, make a motion to continue the hearing until January 11th, 2022.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. I have another letter here, Hancock Street, 429 Hancock Street, GBA 21. Don't we move that at January 11th, too?
That's 21-11?
21-11, yes.
Mr. Chairman, in matter number, uh, here. Uh, 21-11, 10 seconds at mass for a variance fine to construct in addition to an existing fire-damaged commercial space where a restaurant used the premises number 429 Hancock Street, I make a motion to continue the hearing until January 11th.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. Uh, that's it for letters, I believe, right? And we gotta go to these other people that don't have the full set of plans, okay. All right. I have, uh, Mr. Dukah Met, case number ZBA 2157, highly for a finding to convert the existing real estate office into a nail salon on the premise number 134-138 Washington Street. Mr. Dukah met with the applicant, and he had, he got a copy of their lease, and a plot plan for eight spaces are gonna be designated for the people that come in, the participants that come in, the customers, and anyone that works there is gonna park in the new parking lot, so it's like 800 feet away. So, they're gonna, they have eight full spaces, and it's on their lease, too, so it's written in their lease, which I have right here, I believe. Yes, there's the lease right here. Yeah, the lease agreement right here with the eight spaces, so. I think that was most of our worries, was where are people gonna park down there? Uh, I don't know how anyone feels here, any questions, Mr. Cavares?
Well, I have no questions, that's what we were asking for, we were asking for parking relief.
Right. Uh, John?
Same thing.
Russell?
No questions.
All right, could we, uh, have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, matter number 21-57, highly for a finding to convert the existing real estate office into a nail salon on the premises number 134-138 Washington Street, I make a motion to grant finding.
Second.
Adam Clark, can we have a voice vote?
You can. Mike Cavares?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Got a question before it goes through, so there's eight designated parking spaces, right?
Yeah, who am I speaking with?
My name is Jeff Hines, 197 Elm Street, Quincy Southern Neighborhood Association.
You can't speak, that part, that part has already been over with. What, what we decided is just to hold the hearing and see if we get enough parking spaces, and if we don't, if we don't, then, then we're gonna vote on it up or down. So, that part of the hearing is already, but go ahead, since you grabbed the floor, but say what you gotta say, I guess, Mr. Bass. Just really, I don't know how people read.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought I was doing the right thing, yeah.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead, finish up.
My, my concern is, I, I, I support the business, but my concern is, the spaces, if they have eight spaces, how many spaces in that back lot? The massage place at-
Yeah, but-
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Right, but how many people at the same time are gonna go in there, right? I mean, they have eight spots, what they really need, by rights, Mr. Dukah, was six. They have a total of, um, what's the other one, sorry, but eight designated theirs, there's-
They have a total of-
And how many?
Twenty-two spaces on it. Twenty-two, but then, they're designated, for their business, is eight, but there's 22 spots down there. This is the, this is the charge. Yep.
So, if they have eight, and then, how many does the, does the massage place have?
You know what, I don't know, but what, what we talked about was, do they have enough spaces? So, that's what we want as a board, and we made a decision that eight is enough to run that business, with the people that work there can't park there.
Okay, I understand, my, my only concern is, with the dance studio out back, if that's open, they park everywhere, and-
Well, they can't park there, because they're gonna have signs there, designated for that business. It's in their lease, so it has to be designated parking, and that's the reason they're getting this, they can park where they want, if they're not in there, then they will be towed.
Okay, I just, um, because the density is a huge issue, you know, in the neighborhood, I mean, someone that want, someone that wanted to put an in-law apartment in the neighborhood would shut down because there wasn't enough parking, and yet-
Well, there is enough for this, there is enough for this, according to the board. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm not so sure with-
Mr. Cavares, can we please block the mics, please, Jonathan? Let no one speak, and speak out of turn when we're trying to sit here and debate, thank you. Mr. Mr. Cavares, could we have a motion, please?
Uh, I gave you one, but I'll give you another one.
All right, no, 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 it's already done, second, and we got a voice vote, there we go. Adam Clark, you're right.
I have Mike Cavares, now Russ Chin?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Hart Mager?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further on to tonight's agenda, uh, CBA 2175, JVC C Street LLC for variance to demolish the existing building, constructing new 24 residential, if you're 104, 105 C, C Street. The applicant or representative here, is someone wanting to speak, is it?
You looking to speak, or the applicant, you wanna give me a virtual hand raise, so we can-
Chris Carroll, it should be Chris Carroll. I didn't know, the council, I want him to speak after, too.
Chris's iPhone, Jonathan? That's being unmuted.
It's Chris Timmons. Where is it?
I don't-
No, it's Chris Timmons, like, right here.
There's a chat, is that Chris Carroll?
Uh, chat, let me see who it is. You know who that is, under chat?
Yeah, somebody asking about when they're gonna be able to speak, I'm trying to send requests to Chris's iPhone.
All right.
There is another applicant, Kevin Geary, who had his hands up, I think, I'm not sure if he's on the same case.
I think Chris Carroll wanted to speak, they're talking about something about, maybe putting this off or something. Wants to post one.
Text it to the president, I should get that.
Looks like he might have had some internet issues and just left the room, let me see if he comes back in shortly.
All right, uh, let's get back to some, uh, some business, anyway, we have to go to new business, 78 Sagamore, is the applicant here?
Dave Gallagher?
Dave?
Who is it, I'm sorry? Give me a virtual hand raise, or turn your mic on, or, excuse me, turn your, uh, video on, so we can see you.
Chris, it's under Chris Timmons, it's Chris Carroll, but it's under Chris Timmons. See him over here?
All right.
It's Chris Carroll.
You gotta unmute yourself, I just sent you the request to unmute yourself.
Unmute yourself.
I'm here, thank you.
There you go, all right, Chris, you have the floor.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I apologize for this late message, however, at the request of the ward counselor, we're requesting a continuance to November 23rd. The reason therefore is to address the counselor's concerns, as well as the neighborhood concerns, we met with them last week, and our objective is to make these adjustments, and get back, and square everything away till-
You think that's enough time, four weeks?
Absolutely, we were, to be blunt with you, we were somewhat ready to go tonight, and we look forward to your comments. I'd like to go on the record, though, and say, we've been on this project since March, we've met with city officials, we are doing our due diligence, and we look forward to the meeting on the 23rd. I would ask, though, it, it's disheartening, knowing how boards work, there's a massive Facebook campaign against this project with false information in, and I would ask that that stops, the site does not flood, and we will address all of that with our site professionals on the 23rd, and we thank you for your time, and look forward to working with all of you on the 23rd.
Okay, hold on, Chris. Counselor, McCarthy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
You have the floor.
Thank you, um, we had a meeting last Wednesday night on the 20th, the Fox and Hounds in the back room, attended, um, a good crowd from a majority of the Marymount, uh, community, uh, which are, you know, the abudders of the project. Um, I came away with, uh, concerns, uh, in regards to pretty much what the crowd was kinda going down, um, the same avenue, the height, the setback, the parking, the design itself a little bit, um, it was a very good conversation, a lot of people had really good questions, traffic questions, other questions in the area we won't get into, but, um, very good community meeting last week, so, as, as Mr. Carroll says, there is a lot of information that gets going on Facebook, which is, um, you know, it, a lot of people got it right, and a lot of people just jump in and get it wrong, and, um, there's a lot of people that just get on to stir up the other people, so, I look forward to sitting down over the next couple of weeks, dealing with the applicant, having another community meeting if we need to, which we probably will, to talk about that site.
Okay.
Now, we look forward to that.
Thank you for your time, Counselor.
Thank you.
Mr. Cavares, why don't we make that, uh, November 23rd?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, matter number 21-75, JVC C Street LLC for variance to demolish the existing building, and construct a new 24-unit residential building with parking under the premises, number 105 C Street, I make a motion to continue the hearing to November 23rd.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. All right, if anyone can listen up, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor, uh, we have four people here tonight on the board, four, so, everything's new business, and we have five cases. 78 Sagamore, you have a right to move it till there's five people here, or have it heard Anyone give me a wave, Sagamore? Taking care of Sagamore, I didn't even look at him.
Whoever, uh, 78 Sagamore-
Dave Gallagher?
Turn on, if you could turn on the video, just give us a wave, maybe a virtual hand raise, it's David Gallagher, let me see if I can find him.
Oh, Mike, you taking this?
No, he wanted to speak on the other page, but there's no testimony.
Mike, there was no testimony on that last case, so we weren't gonna hear testimony tonight.
Hello?
David.
Hello?
There you are, David.
I've been trying to speak on this meeting for the last 10 minutes.
Well, Dave, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, Dave, we didn't call you yet.
You mentioned my name.
Yeah, we started going through, right now, I just called your name, it's the first time I called your name, 78 Sagamore.
Okay, well, I heard a phone call, and I couldn't unmute, I had to come in, I was listening by phone, and then I had to come in.
But we're not gonna let you unmute.
We can move on, we can move on.
Dave, David, listen, please, let me finish, we're not gonna let you unmute, we don't give the authority to unmute until we call your name, or you give us a hand raise, and then we say, we're not calling him yet, we're not gonna let him speak yet, we have five things, there's four people on the board tonight, Dave, you wanna hear the case tonight, or you wanna put her off till there's five?
Okay.
Because you need all five, you need all four.
You just said I needed four, and there's four tonight, right?
Right, right.
Okay, so let's do it.
Okay, very good, thank you, we'll get back to you.
David, whoa, 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 no, I want it to be heard, I don't want it to be wrong.
I heard you, I said, we'll get back to you, I have five other cases to ask, please, relax.
Mr. Chairman, you have a Mike O'Connor with his hand raised.
Is it full moon out here yet? It's only 6 o'clock, let's relax, everybody. GBA 2168, Sarah Page Johnson, for finding-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, before you move on, I'm sorry, there is somebody who's been kinda waiting, patient, I know it's been crazy tonight, uh, I don't know if you wanna let him speak before you go on this, just before you move forward or not, uh, Mike O'Connor's been waiting with his hand up here.
You wanna speak on 105, correct, Mike?
Yes, just a question, really.
But we're not, go ahead, what's the question?
Well, the question is, is, is there any way to, uh, leave a comment for the board tonight, just in case, uh, something happens on the 23rd?
No, but you can't, you can send in an email.
To whom?
Send it in to the clerk.
To the Dukah?
Yeah, but, send it to, send it to Mr. Dukah, that's fine.
Okay, that's the only option to go on record tonight?
Well, you're not going on record tonight, that won't get written in till next, next meeting, we have it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, further on to tonight's agenda, ZBA 2168, 38 Chow Street.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt you for a second, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm confused, are we not doing 66?
We're going through to see if everybody wants to go forward with four votes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm going through each case to make sure we move them out, okay. Uh, ZBA 2168, Sarah, Sarah Page Johnson, 38 Chow Street, are you here? Wave, okay, if you can unmute, give her the authority to unmute it?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you, there's four people here, so you have to have all four votes tonight, do you wanna go forward?
I would like to, yes, please.
Okay, very good, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. GBA 2169, James Flaherty, 16, oh, wait a minute, 6971 Webster, this might be one of these, it is. James.
How you doing, miss?
James, hold on one minute, here's, here's, here's the problem I have here. You have, I have no plot plan here, I have, uh, no dimensions on your porch, you said 180 square feet, don't say what is by, there's nothing written on a plot plan, and we have no drawings.
Shouldn't it, it's all sent in?
No, here's, here's what happens, everyone makes an application, they put it online, and they're asked to drop off full packets.
Yeah.
They don't drop off the plot plan, they don't drop off the, the drawings, it's not up to us to make that packet up, the clerk is busy enough, she can't go say what's missing out of this, and then go copy 14 copies of a plot plan, or 14 copies of plans, and put them in each packet, it's your obligation, and it's not in there, so no one, none of us has these.
We, we've sent them in, like-
And they, they weren't in, because they weren't in the packet, I've asked all members if they got them, and they said no.
Really?
Yeah, they, they sent in, you sent them in online, but when you drop-
We dropped them in, we dropped them in.
When you put your packages together, they weren't in.
Really?
No one has a set of drawings, no one has a set of, a plot plan, so, she can't go check every application and see if everything's in there, you drop, your, your obligation is to drop off 14, should be, should, should spend full time doing that, so, we're gonna pick another date, so, we have, uh, November-
So, basically, you're, you're telling me that they don't have all the information in there?
Exactly, there's no plot plan in here.
There has to be a plot plan in there, there has to be.
When you put your packets together and drop them here-
Yeah.
It's not in the packet.
We're, it's not in the package, though, no?
Not your online stuff, you could have put everything on online, we approved it.
Gotcha, so you're saying, you're saying to me, print it out, put it in the package, and drop it in?
Correctly, just get her, her plot plan, and the dimensions on the plot plan for your porch, and where it's going.
Yeah, I have, I have all that, yeah, I have all that, so I'll just-
Drop off all the copies you need, we're not gonna print them here, you gotta print them out, and she'll send them out, she'll, she'll, she'll get them sent out to us.
Okay.
All right, here's the date, uh, we have, what is it, the 6th, and the, uh, 9, 9, right, 9 and the 23rd, all right. If you can get them out to us, we can hear you the 9th.
Yeah, all right.
9th?
Yeah, 9th will do.
All right, just make sure, we got a plot plan, registered plot plan.
Yeah, that's all you need, the plot plan, right?
Well, I want, I want, in a plot plan, you're gonna show where you're putting your porch, correct?
Correct.
And how close to the curb you are, and how close to the front edge.
Yeah.
Just call a clerk, and she'll tell you exactly where you need it.
All right, yeah, thanks very much, yeah.
All right, Michael, can I, can I have a motion for the 9th, please?
Yeah, matter number 21-69, James Flaherty, for, uh, variance to construct a new front porch on the premises numbered 69-71 Webster Street, make a motion to continue the hearing until November 9th.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. Two more, one of them, I believe. 168 Plymouth Street, there, there, that's the last one, all right, 23 Barber. If I make sure this is all there, because these smokes, oh. Now on, really, I, I, I know, but, these plans, really, to me, are non-acceptable, but, I mean, if someone can read them to me tonight, I'll go, I'll go through, but, we shouldn't be accepting this stuff, Mr. Dukah, look at this, I, I can't read that.
You can either, either.
Huh, can you read that stuff?
I, I couldn't.
I couldn't, I don't even know what the heck it is, it's like, half of it's on, half it isn't, it's like, oh, yeah, just sad, let's start with this one first, uh, I mean, really, didn't have to, if he can get a screen, where's 23 Barber, who's taking care of that?
Mr. Foley.
Mr. Foley?
Foley.
Foley, Mr. Foley, unmute yourself, Mr. Foley. You're unmuted? Yeah. Can you unmute yourself?
That's it, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're there, you're on. You know, that plan, do you have a way to put that online and explain it, because I can't even read it, this is, this is what we got here, your copy is like half-printed, it's, I can't read any dimensions on here, you put everything on one sheet, it's just not fair to us, I mean, we're trying to build homes, and, and, and it's like, you know, I, I know you're trying to get it in, and put it in, and, but, can you explain that to us, piece by piece?
It was acceptable, so.
Um, honestly, I, I didn't do that myself, that was from the contractor.
He did a bad job, did a bad job, because I'll tell you, it's, even, even, I can't read the writing, it's so small, number one, it's like, I have no idea what, what's, what he's doing here, you see what the ma, I can see master bath, master bedroom, nook, but I can't, none of these dimensions can I read.
No.
But, we'll get back to you, how's that, do you wanna go forward tonight with four, or you wanna wait till five?
Uh, we need all four votes.
You need all four votes, if one descends, fast.
And so, do we need to send in a new plot plan?
Do, do you want us to get a better, with, you know, the legible dimensions and everything on it?
You want, yeah, you wanna do this tonight, and just get us a better set of drawings for the back, we'll do it in a couple weeks?
I mean, I guess so, I don't want to hear that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if that's gonna sway to a no vote, if, with the, if you can't read it, if that's gonna sway-
It's kinda hot, it really is, it's like, I, I just can't, I don't know, let me ask a couple guys, Mr. Hamel, can you read this?
I'd rather see something, um, you know, broken out, so you could actually, you know, it's, everything on one page, you, you're right, you can't, uh, discern exactly what he's trying to do, and how much it is, and how big it is.
Exactly, I can't see, no, no-
It's the same footprint as the existing structure, it's not, we're not going out at all, it's just going up.
I know, you're just trying to find, like, the bathrooms, the closet, the master bedrooms, you know, I'm trying to, you know what? Can you get, like, can you get two pages, if this done on two pages, so we can read it, and a better copy, it would, it would work.
Do we have to do that 15 times again, or?
Yeah.
15 more packets?
No, just that, just the plot, just the plan.
Just the plan?
Just the plan, so we know what you, what you're putting in.
Okay.
Or just break it up, that, that sheet into two sheets, and I know it's a pain, but it's hard for us, I mean, I try to read this all day, I'm trying, I put on a pair of glasses, which I got, I don't need, and it still couldn't help me to decipher this, his writing, he's got, he's got things he's writing between these, and I don't know, even know what they say, so, we could bring that down to two, how about November 9th, if you can get that in this week?
Okay.
We can hear you in two weeks, how's that? Mr. Cavares, can we get a motion, we need to get that, that drawing fixed.
Mr. Chairman, in ZBA matters 21-76, Liam Foley, for a finding to construct a vertical extension in the front setback on the premises number 24, I'm sorry, 23 Barber Terrace, I make a motion to continue the hearing until November 9th.
Second.
Yeah. Second, on the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so move. And the last one, Plymouth Street. Same thing, Rich.
And, yeah, yes, we're willing to go for all four members.
Well, you can, but we're not gonna do it, because I have no, no plans in, no plot plan, I have no pack, no parking layout.
I never knew, according to the, the, what was required, when we printed out the forms, it said what had to be, were in the packet.
In the packet, yeah, plot plan.
It said that was optional.
Yeah, well, it's, huh, huh, you don't have a floor plan here, you didn't even tell us what's what, in the building, you're putting a whole second floor in a house, you're not telling us, there's gonna be five bedrooms, there's gonna be two bedrooms, there's gonna be a bath, three baths, we don't even know what we're gonna approve.
We, we submitted the, we submitted the whole architectural plans.
Exactly.
We don't have them.
Well, other building permits, but what happens is, when you bring a packet together, we don't print them and put them in the packets, you do that.
We would, but when we give the, when the city lists out what was required, it said here, this is required-
Hold on, yeah, yeah, Mr. Dukah's, that's his, his, his department, here's Mr. Dukah right here.
I mean, we were, we've been waiting, because we submitted everything so fast, we missed last month, we did the two mandatory, what was, what we were told had to be included in the papers, and then went down, it said plot plan optional, and everybody else put everything in, you know, for the DPW, we had no idea that we had to downscale the 24 by 36-inch plans to-
I understand, all right, so, the, the problem is-
I understand. All right. So the, the problem is that you apply for the building permit and those, uh, plans were, are still in the building permit. They didn't come over to the ZBA side and what you printed, uh, were, there were no floor plans. So I have one copy of the floor plans. The, the thing with the plot plan, it's optional. That's up to you if you wanna print one or not. What's, what the chairman is saying is without a plot plan, and the bed, the amount of bedrooms that appears to be going in there, it, it looks like, according to what we see on the GIS, you don't have enough parking to support the bedrooms. So without a plot plan, it, it probably not gonna, it's not gonna survive tonight. Because you, you don't have a whole lot of parking at that site. So yes, the plot plan is, is optional. But it's up to you to convince the board that what you're doing is not more detrimental to the neighborhood in that you have enough parking to support the additional room on the second floor. So there's no way to get to the backyard for parking and you only have that one driveway and it goes into the garage. So that's, you're, you're correct. It is optional. But I don't think the board's gonna be convinced because it doesn't appear that you have any additional parking.
It doesn't say here.
So, I mean, we, we, we've got barely essential stuff, but I don't know, what, what Marty is portraying is it doesn't look like you have enough that's gonna convince the board, especially that there's only four people here tonight. You would need all four votes for it to pass. Um, you can, you can go forward, but there's not enough information.
Okay, then let me ask you this. How can I find somebody who can actually sit down with me? I went to the two of the open night meetings for filling out these zoning boards and nobody was able to give me any clear directions. The problem with, the problem with what we're running into right now is our construction loan is hinging on getting approval for the building permit. And we're, we're about to expire. And each time I went down to the DPW and handed off everything, it was great. We're all set. Thank you. And I said, well, what am I missing? Nothing. You have everything here and he would leave.
Well, again, we don't speak for the board. You had a complete application. You, you decided not to put a plot plan. Um, we're going by the seat of our pants with the GIS. We, we, I actually printed one for, for the chairman just about, just before the meeting started because he was asking about the plot plan. If you wanna make your case, you can make your case, but we don't speak for the board.
Right.
You're here to convince the board.
Okay.
That this project is, you know.
On your, also on, on your pocket, right? Yeah. Make, make sure it's written out there. So what spaces, how many spaces you have and stuff. So we know how many spaces you do have there.
Okay.
You know what? Put a second floor in a house and the guy's got one and a half parking spaces and he's putting on three bedrooms and now he's parking on the street everywhere. You know, it's not good for the neighborhood if we do that, so. I just, I think we need, and this happened, I think, from the, from the permit that you got, then it went to the ZBA side. Someone probably, yeah. Missed information, man. That's, that's.
Yeah, I guess my, I guess my question, you know, I guess, you know, we, we're gonna have to hold off. I guess the question is, there's two people who live in this house. You know, we, we already have more spaces than we have vehicles.
I know, it's, but when you sell the house, you wanna make sure there's enough.
You know, and, and that's, yeah, yeah, and part of the reason we're putting this on is we didn't wanna sell. We wanted, we wanted to live here. We, you know, we don't wanna move out from where we are.
And we do it the ninth and there's still enough time for you to take care of the loans and all that.
Our loan expires on Friday. That's the problem. We were hoping to get in the Tuesday before and.
All right, all right. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what. There's a problem here. Hold on, just hold on and we'll see you at the end of the meeting.
All right, thanks.
You know what? We're just gonna have to figure something out. Right, and we can, we can, we can have to do all that.
Chairman, how can we figure this out? I, I can't.
Here's how we can figure it out. I can take his plans online and I can put them on for us. And it's gonna be contingent if we do this. That's why I wanted to talk to you guys. If, if we can contingent this approval is if he turns in what we all have explained tonight, the plot plan.
We need a floor plan.
With the floor plan, the plot plan, the floor plan, right. You need a floor plan, correct. And you need a parking plan. That's why I wanted the, the, uh, plot plan to show us parking. You know, there's, there's, yeah. And the garage, are you gonna keep that garage, by the way? Is that gonna be used as a garage? All right, so you know what you gotta do with all that too. All right. All right, let's get back to the meeting here. Well, let me see. Mr. Hemel, Mr. Chin, we're gonna share the screen with you, what, what I have here, only because his, his bank's going out Friday. You know, it kinda stinks, but I feel bad, but I, I, I just, I don't have the plot plan. I'd have to take it out of his other, his building permit. He's got one in the building permit file. We could take out and share. Jonathan could share with us. And he has other stuff in there, but we can't be, if we did this for every case, we'd be here all night trying to find this, find this stuff. That's the problem. We shouldn't have to do that. I know, I know. All right. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ames has his hands up again.
Sorry, I muted myself. I wasn't sure. I mean, I, I have, I guess what I have, I have the original plot plan when the house was built in fifty-nine. I have the, like, those drawings. I don't know if you're talking about me actually having somebody come out to survey or if you just need me to, to scale down the twenty-four by thirty-six inch drawings to, for the, for the addition.
Yeah, that's what we need. And a floor plan, I need a floor plan to say what, what you got, the floor plan. What's going in there? How many bedrooms? What is what?
Okay.
It, it just, I, I think, don't say nothing. It says you're putting a second floor on and you're going above the garage, which is eight feet off the lot line.
Right.
It doesn't say nothing about how much parking, what you have upstairs. There's not, there's no information for us.
Right. We're basically, we're going from a three bedroom to a four bedroom.
Yeah.
Um, and as far as the bedroom changes. And, you know, and, you know, because we're gonna lose a bedroom in order to make an entryway and we'll gain a bedroom back on the second floor.
And the second floor is gonna have a family room. That's what's going on.
And the garage is staying.
Yes, the garage is staying.
Yep.
And then the family, there's gonna be a family or TV room over the garage.
Yeah. No, I know, I know. We're just, we're just, we're just talking to make sure. Does everyone hear that? And we'll do this at the end. If you feel comfortable. If you don't, we'll do it the ninth and that's the way it is. Oh, Jonathan has everything on his end. He went in and grabbed them out of the, out of the, out of the. All right, let's, let's just move on here. New business. Sixty-six, there we go, sixty-six. David Gallagher. Hey, I'm here. Uh, you need to be sworn in.
Yeah, we haven't done that yet.
Yeah. Mr. Bass?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Thank you.
You have the floor. Tell us what you wanna do.
I'd like to, uh, live in the commercial building that I own, a portion of it.
Yeah. Go ahead. What are you doing?
Well, I can read my brief statement if you want.
Well, just tell us what you, tell us what you're doing, what you're building. There's people here wanting to hear what you're doing.
Okay, well, I have a four hundred, I mean, a, um, commercial building on Sagamore Street. It's, uh, commercial. And I'd like to convert four hundred square feet to a residential area so that I can live there.
Right, exactly what you're putting in there.
Exactly. What am I putting in there? Is that what you said? I didn't hear. Uh, it would be a one bedroom and then a, a studio, well, um, in the ba, in the bedroom would be a bathroom and, um, you know, it's a bedroom. And then the other area would just be the living space, um, uh, you know, dining room. There's a, there's already, um, a small kitchen. I'm looking at the plan here. Do you see the plan I have there?
We have it.
Okay. Is your version in color?
No.
No.
Now, what do you have, what do you have outside your bathroom, in your bathroom, in your bedroom? You have, you have a shower, a sink and, and, and a toilet, correct?
Yes.
What's right outside? What is outside there?
Like if you go through the door into the living space?
Yeah, to the left.
Um.
I don't know what that is.
I, I'm not sure which area you're referring to.
Walk into your bedroom to the left. You have something marked there. I don't know what it is.
Oh, that's a closet. I think it's a closet.
Oh, all right. Don't show doors and that, all right. All right. All right, any questions aboard?
What's, what's currently in the other unit, if you will? I mean, who's, who's already there?
There's, um, another commercial space. It's a music studio. And that's listed as unit seventy-eight A.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chin, any questions?
No questions, yes.
Uh, Mr. Hemel?
Yeah, what's in seventy-eight B? Is that your business?
Yes.
And what is that?
Um, what kind of business?
Yes.
Uh, we do illustration.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But you say we, do you have been more than one person?
Well, um, my, my business does illustration. It's, it's just me.
Okay.
All right, we'll call that pilot hearing closed. Is there anyone, like, speaking in favor? Anyone wanna speak in favor? First call? Second call?
Citizen Rutherford.
Citizen Rutherford, you're up. Take an oath, John.
John, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Um, I'm definitely in favor of this. This is a very small ask. You've been converting smart space and industrial space all over the city, so he's just asking to just use space he already has to live there. So, um, I'm one hundred percent in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Second call? Third call?
Not seeing any hands.
Any correspondence? BPW? I have a letter here from BPW, uh, seventy-eight Sagamore, case number ZBA twenty-one sixty-six, review the above referenced material, have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
No hands.
Third call? Call that pilot hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Bass.
I don't like it. I really don't, but, you know, I could change my mind in the next couple of minutes if someone convinces me that we should go with this plus because eventually this gentleman's gonna move on and we're gonna have this little studio apartment that's, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Hemel?
I don't have any problem with it.
Yep. Mr. Chin?
I wanna ask the applicant what his parking situation is for this building?
Yep.
There's two parking spots, um, right up in the above, uh, of the plan there where, where it says exterior at the very top. That's like, um, a space behind the building and you could fit, um, two parking spots in there, two cars.
So are those, are those already dedicated to your commercial tenants?
No. No, it's just a space right now. There's a, there's a set of, um, uh, swi, there's a, a set of gates there that go into the space. I haven't really used it for anything. And it has, um, the property beside it. It has, um, I'm not sure of the right word, but it's in my deed, um, a, a right away through that area. So you'll, you'll always have access through that.
Are there any other buildings in your neighborhood that are, that are mixed use, commercial and residential like this?
I couldn't answer that question. I, I don't know.
Is it, is primarily residential neighborhood or primarily a commercial neighborhood?
Well, um, if you look, do you have the, um, the site plan there?
He's asking you a question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to answer him.
All right.
Uh, do you have the site plan there?
Yeah.
Um, if, if you can see, there's, um, the Welcome Young Park is right across the street from me. And this whole area is surrounded by commercial buildings. Um, and then on the outside, I mean, the whole park, um, has commercial buildings around it. And then behind them is all residential areas. Is it, is that the question you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's fine, your response. It's just unusual to come, to come before us and, and ask to stick a residential apartment in the middle of a commercially used building.
Well, part, part of the, you know, well, I need a place to live is one thing. And the problem is that right now, this is completely, um, underutilized. Um, by the commercial space there, nobody works there now. Everybody's remote. Um, and I, I don't have any intention of asking them to come back. Um, I was really surprised that it actually works out. Um, so I'm, I'm in that space right now. It, it's completely empty except for me all the time. Um, and, um, you know, it, it just, it just would work out well for me if I could have, uh, a place to live there.
Okay.
Michael, no vote?
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
No, no. Yeah. Go ahead.
Didn't we authorize one over on the artery in a repair shop where the fellow wanted to put a apartment upstairs and we authorized it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, this, John has a good point there, Mr. Chairman. You know, we did that. Tell the same thing, even though it's an upstairs thing. This is gonna be on street level. Uh, I know that the label is gonna be developed a little bit more. I do know that there's residential places in the area. Glamping doggies is right there. I'll vote in favor.
Chin?
I'm in favor.
Have a motion, please, Mr. Bass.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, number twenty-one dash sixty-six, David Gallagher, for a fighting special permit to add a dwelling unit to the existing commercial property on the premises numbered seventy-eight Sagamore Street. I make a motion to grant a fighting or grid release requested.
I'm clerk. Can we have a vote, please?
Yes. Hank Cavares?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Marty Agan?
Yes. Thank you. Case number, ZBA twenty-one sixty-eight, Sarah Paige Johnson, thirty-eight Charles Street. You in here?
Hello.
Uh, could you take an oath, please, Sal? While you're standing?
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
All right. So why don't you tell us, uh, what you wanna do there? I know you're ripping down your house.
Yep, so plan is to demolish existing structure and basically just rebuild on the existing footprint. Add a bathroom to the first floor because the current structure only has a second floor bathroom. Uh, go up a half a story, story and a half.
Yep.
Half.
The final.
One story, yeah.
Two point five story.
Two and a half story. Uh, you know, make the stairs a accessible width. Which they're currently not. That's pretty much it.
And, I mean, I just looked and did you see the bathroom upstairs? I think the lavatory has, uh, it's not a double sink, it's a single sink and the master.
It's a single. That's correct, yep.
Yeah, I was just wondering, what, what, I was, I was just curious why you wouldn't take that one.
Oh, I, I just heard from the architect that plumbing is easier to plumb if you just do a single, so that's, that's pretty much why.
The guy's underneath there. He can put in a second one, yeah, right.
Oh, nice, all right.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, so you're keeping it small.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering, yeah, I was just, you know, like, most people would move their driveway over a little bit and try to get another four, six feet. It's a beautiful little house you're gonna have there, don't you?
Yeah, we're, we're excited about it. Yeah, and we might, we might scooch the driveway over, but not to increase the size of the house, just to align it with the current, uh, parking garage or garage, so. Yeah.
All right, Mr. McCarthy, I know, uh, before we speak, Mr. McCarthy has a meeting he's gotta run to. Mr. McCarthy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I, I took a ride down to thirty-eight Charles. Um, they have a beautiful little home there and, um, I'm in full support of, uh, folks staying in Ward One, especially in Houssneck, and I think it's a great plan. I just wanted to make sure I got that in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cavares, questions?
It's just a one bedroom?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, because it's a little unusual, but I couldn't figure out the life of me if I was missing something on the plans.
Right, did I?
That's pretty much it.
And also it's kind of difficult to see the way the architects cut these plans up instead of giving the, you know, cutting them down the front like that or down the side.
Yeah.
That would be a little difficult for me too, so. Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chin?
It looks like a good plan. I'm in favor.
Mr. Hemel?
I'm in favor.
Okay, let's, uh, see if anyone wants to speak in favor. Anyone want to speak in favor? First call? Citizen Rotifeld. Already sworn in, John?
Thank you, um, yeah, this is, um, building, did they say they were actually building inside the footprint?
Same footprint.
That's unbelievable. I think they should get a medal from like the environmental people because
Yeah.
you know, that, that's why everyone in Ward is, is shocked. And House Neck, we got people coming in and building three or four times the original footprint. So I want to thank you and I want to totally support this.
Awesome, thank you.
David Jacobs?
Mr. Jacobs? You're up. Unmute yourself.
Hi, hi Marty, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you.
Says, yeah, I have met the Johnsons. They seem very nice. I'm in full support of this project. They're very excited to be moving into House Neck and they've already come down here and take evening walks. It's so nice to see them, so we look forward to it.
Sounds great.
Mr. Jacobs address?
Uh, Charles Street. What, what's your address, Dave?
Number ten.
Ten, ten. Walks this kid to school in like three seconds.
Nice.
I don't know. Anyone else like to speak?
Not seeing any other hands.
Second call, third call. Call that part of the hearing closed. I have a letter here from the D P W, thirty-eight Charles Street, case number Z B A twenty-one sixty-eight. We have reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call?
No hands.
Third call closed. I'll be voting in favor. He's voting in favor. Can I have a motion please, Mr.?
Chairman, man number twenty-one dash sixty-eight, Sarah Page Johnson, for a finding to demolish and reconstruct the home on the existing foundation and footprint on the premises number thirty-eight Charles Street. I make a motion to grant the relief requested.
I can.
Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Mike Kovaeus?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes. And Plymouth Avenue, we're down on Plymouth Avenue. Uh, John? The, the plot plan, do you have the plot plan?
Go ahead, give me one second.
And I have one here, but it's it's kind of, uh,
Once.
Yep. Yeah, that's good. If we've got a set of plan, all right, you see that? There's their, uh, so what do you got, twenty-seven feet from the garage? So you get two parking spaces. Yeah. Well, we can move, we can move one over.
I can resize the parking.
Yeah.
It complies.
Okay.
So I could take care of that.
Take care of this side nine, okay. Uh, he's got two spots. He's got one in the garage, guys, and he's going to have one right out in front. Plus, Mr. Duca's going to work with them to get that third spot out in front of the garage.
Okay.
So he can, uh, if, if we're all in favor of that, I think Mr. Duca could take care of that.
Okay.
And could we see, uh, the building plans going up on the second floor? We can keep going, John. I don't know what number it'd be on, yeah, right here, there you go. Yeah, propose second floor.
Bobby, you have control. If you want to take my mouse and scroll through.
Oh, all right. Can we bring this up a little bit? Like if I click on this, can I? Oh, here it is, right here, I got it.
Master.
There we go. There we go, I got it right here. Let me just bring this over.
Just move this down here in the person. There you go.
All right. Thanks, John. So he's got master bath, master bedroom, family room, and office bedroom. So, and then you, one bedroom downstairs?
There's two. It, right now it's a one-story ranch, all three bedrooms on the first floor. We're losing one to create the entranceway where the stairs are going to be.
You're leaving two, so there's, so there's four bedrooms, really?
Yes, sir.
All right, so you're going to have four bedrooms and you're going to have three. Yeah, he's got, that's an office bath. There's two there and two downstairs. He's got four bedrooms. All right. And he's got the family room over the garage.
Yeah, yes.
The playroom, uh. Any questions, guys? I can see what he's doing here on the second floor. And he's just, he's just going up, right up on top of the, uh, ranch, taking out one of the bed, what are you doing downstairs that you're taking out one of the bedrooms?
Yeah, the, the, depending upon how you view the, what's the existing front door will be moved over to the, uh, the single window, which is a bedroom and that will become a li- little entryway foyer.
So that'll be a foyer, all right.
Yep.
Let me see if I can bring this down. There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, you can get the two bedrooms there and then, okay, kitchen, living room, and your garage, okay?
Yeah.
I see exactly what you're doing here, yeah. There you go, yeah. You got a half bath over there, all right. Any questions, guys, or what's going on here? As you can see, it's going straight up.
It's good to see it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I apologize while I was, while you.
Well, no, you, you, there's a lot of confusion with that.
I, I looked at the, I looked and it said these were mandatory and emboldened. The other one was optional. And I just saw that as we weren't printing it. I didn't have to include it.
Sure, okay, no problem.
Not guilty, you're not guilty. Not guilty. The clerk, the clerk is, hey, not guilty. She's panicking to someone.
Not innocent, but not guilty.
Right. Mr. Kovaeus, any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Mr. Chin, any question?
Last question, um, so the number of parking spaces in the requested conditions, will it be free or will it be?
Free, we're going to give him three parking spaces out front. He's going to have one twenty-seven foot plus the garage. And they're leaving the garage. And, and Mr. Duca said he's going to massage what he's got to do by making the driveway a little wider to get two spots up.
So it won't be tandem in the garage, in the driveway, it'll be two, two accessible?
Yeah, because he's moving his front door over to
Yeah.
to the left.
Okay, thank you. I'm in favor.
Yeah, exactly. So he's got the garage one and then he's going to have one beside. Mr. Hemel, any questions?
No questions, I'm in favor.
All right, could I, uh, does anyone want to speak in favor? Mr. Rotifeld?
There you go.
John? John?
He's muted.
His hand raised, Johnson, they, uh.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was, I was eating. I mean, there are some good things about these little meetings.
Oh, a couple of people eating there tonight, I was looking.
Exactly. But no, I'm in favor of this, um, um, you know, you pay a lot of taxes in Quincy and you're just trying to improve your house. You know, you're letting the builders build crazy. I'm definitely in favor of the homeowner, um, improving their property so they are happy and they'll stay in Quincy, so I'm in favor, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Second call? Speak in favor. Third call?
No further hands.
Call that part of the hearing closed. I have a letter here from the zoning board, one sixty-eight Plymouth Avenue, case number Z B A twenty-one seventy-eight. We have reviewed the above referenced project, have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Anyone in the neighborhood, anyone anywhere?
Not seeing any hands.
One. Second call? Third call? Call that closed. I'll be voting in favor. I think he's a nice project. It's too bad we just got confused in the beginning with this stuff, but we even talked, me and Mr. Duca, and Mr. Duca just talked to me. He says, you know, I got to make things a little, probably a little tighter on that than he wants to do in his own. Huh? Yes, could, uh, could you get me a set of plans? All right, we can, matter of fact.
I can drop them off.
They're going to move them over.
Okay, thank you.
They're going to move them and print them and move them, whatever they got to do to get this one done. Since it's already been voted on almost. All right, uh, could, Miss Bass, could I have a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, man number twenty-one dash seventy-eight, Richard Ames, for a variance finding to renovate the first floor and add a second story, including over the garage of the premises number one sixty-eight Plymouth Avenue. I make a motion to grant the request, the request, the motion, the variance in the finding.
Seconded, I think.
Yeah, dead.
Okay, okay. Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote please?
Mike Kovaeus?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sorry about the confusion, but, uh, I mean, it's just that sometimes you get these points, you can't even read them and it's frustrating. You're trying, you're trying to get it done and you just, I, I can't read it, no problem. And, uh, yeah, all right. Good night, have a good night, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.